Good afternoon and welcome to the BOCC's Budget Workshop. I'm going to turn everything on to Michael S. Merrill.
(laughing) Excuse me. Caught me in the moment.
Mr. Chairman, that's like a parent using their kid's middle name, you know?
(laughing) Yipes.
(laughing) Yeah.
All right, well, we are here today to talk about our ELAP program and also a review of county fees, some of the major fees. And so what I'm looking for today is first of all to obviously present where we are in the ELAP program, what opportunities are and so forth, and kind of get a basic understanding. But more so to get a direction from the board if you want to increase acquisitions, if you're interested in levying additional millage under the ELAP referendum, because all of those things would need to be included in the budget. So that's why this is being titled as a Budget Workshop, because ultimately we need to know the answers to those, as well as the county fees, whether we're interested in increasing any of the fees or levying any new fees. So that's kind of what we're looking for at the end of the workshop. But we'll start, we'll begin with ELAP and Forest Turberville. We'll make that presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Turberville.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much. It's great to be here with you today. Again, my name is Forest Turberville, and I'm a Director of the Conservation and Environmental Lands Management Department. We currently manage about 63,400 acres of land within the county. And throughout this presentation, at least my portion, I'll go through about half of it, then Kevin and Ricky with our Management and Budget Department will go through the rest. What I'm going to do today is kind of go through our land management process, our land acquisition process, where we've been, where we're at today, and where we'd like to go in the future. And a lot of these recommendations in here, especially toward the end of my presentation, will be based upon the ELAP audit that came out in 2018, which I think all of you reviewed back in December and had some recommendations on that as well. So with that, I'll move forward. So just a quick review. Back in 1987, the J.K. Platt ELAP program was created with the vision of preserving environmentally significant lands through strategic land acquisitions. And really, there's one guiding principle, and that is that land is a finite resource that should be managed and protected in a thoughtful and meaningful manner that enhances the lives of all residents. Now, back in 1987, the original referendum was for four years, $21 million. Well, in a county as large as Hillsborough, $21 million is only going to get you so far. So staff realized that in the late 1980s, and then in 1990, they came back to the voters and asked for a $100 million referendum, asked for approval for that, which it did get approved by a three-to-one margin. And that $100 million plus the $21 million from the initial referendum served us very well over a 20-year period. From 1987 through 2007, we acquired with our state and local partners about 45,000 acres of environmentally sensitive land. Tremendous achievement. But unfortunately, in 2007, we ran out of bond money. So we went back to the voters in 2008, and we asked them for an additional $200 million, again, given just the increase in land costs and everything else over a 20-year period. And we asked that that be spent on both acquisition and restoration of ELAP sites. That's kind of the one big difference between that referendum and previous referendums was now we could actually utilize ELAP dollars for habitat restoration, initial management activities like installation of fire lanes, initial exotic plant control, but not your day-to-day operation and maintenance. That cannot be utilized under bond funds. So we were very pleased when that passed with 79% voter approval. That number unto itself, I think, is impressive, but what's more impressive is that that was passed back in November 2008 during the height of the economic recession. So there's a pattern in the history here of Hillsborough County residents supporting conservation and environmental protection efforts. So looking at acquisition, what are some of the tools that we use? Well, we have really two different tools at our disposal. We have outright purchase, which is what we call fee simple acquisition, or we could purchase conservation easements. That's what we call less-than-fee acquisition. To date, the only technique that we've used is fee simple acquisition or outright purchase. Again, it's a great way to do it, but I think moving forward, we are going to rely more and more on conservation easements. Typically, they're cheaper to acquire. You still achieve many of the same objectives from a resource protection standpoint, and it's kind of the trend that I think even the state of Florida is going to. So we'd like to explore that alternative as we move forward with the program. Desired outcomes. These are very straightforward. Preservation of undisturbed lands with significant wildlife habitat. Additionally, restoration of disturbed lands in strategic locations. A lot of times, we'll have to buy a particular site, we'll say a 1,000-acre site, and maybe 800 acres of it is natural habitat, 200 acres of it is disturbed from some kind of prior agricultural activity or land clearing or something. So we'll go in and we'll actually restore those areas, and it creates one whole ecosystem. Talking about restoration, that leads us to management of natural ecosystems, and that's what my staff does. We actually go out and we manage all of these ELAP sites. And some of the major components of management include the eradication of invasive exotic plant species, the use of prescribed fire at appropriate intervals, and also to provide passive recreational uses such as hiking. Also includes equestrian use, in some cases, mountain biking where it's appropriate, bird watching, nature study. Very passive uses as opposed to, you know, say, a traditional park where you might have a recreation center or, you know, more intensive uses. And finally, at the end of the day, the objective of the ELAP program is to create a sustainable, interconnected network of preserved lands. And I believe that's still possible in Hillsborough County. Going back on our history for just a moment, since the inception of the ELAP program, 132 sites have been identified as meeting the ELAP criteria for protection or acquisition. Fifty-five of those sites have been acquired. Some of the larger preserves that we've acquired include the Lake Dan and Lake Francis preserves. They're located in northwest Hillsborough County. Lower Green Swamp Preserve in northeast Hillsborough County, that's almost 13,000 acres. Cockroach Bay Preserve, I know that many of you are familiar with that. That's down near Ruskin. Significant restoration efforts there with the Water Management District over the last 25 years. Fish Hawk Creek Preserve in central Hillsborough County. Little Manatee River Corridor Preserve, which we, again, have jointly participated with SWIFTMUD and other state agencies to protect that area. Alderman's Ford Preserve, and then finally, the Golden Aster Scrub Preserve, which is in the Gibsonton area right near Interstate 75. The Golden Aster Scrub Preserve is a great preserve, a great natural area. I would recommend that if you go to any preserve or start out going to any preserve, I'd go to Golden Aster Scrub first. It has a wide variety of habitats. It has scrub, sandhill, pine flatwoods, depression marsh, hardwood systems, bay systems. It's a tremendous site. It's unfortunately fragmented now by development a little bit, but still at 1,200 acres. It's good size, and it's very representative, I think, of the habitats that are still existing within Hillsborough County. And by the way, all the photos in this presentation were taken at ELAP sites. These are not canned photos or taken from a magazine or anything like that. So looking at ELAP management for just a moment, we currently have four field offices and 40 staff members. We've grown substantially over the last 15 years. When I first started, I think we were at 18 staff members. Now we're at 40. Of course, our acreage has increased substantially as well, so that's an appropriate number. Now, over the 63,400 acres of our ELAP preserves, we do quite a bit when it comes to management. We maintain 350 miles of security fence, 500 miles of fire lanes, most of which we've installed over the years, and 165 miles of hiking, biking, and equestrian trails. So those are management tasks that are performed on a daily basis, whether it's mowing, establishment of new fire lanes, fixing fences or placing fences. Those are done every day. We also apply prescribed fire to an average of 3,700 acres annually. That's a 10% wildfire risk reduction over our ELAP sites. We conduct invasive exotic species control on a daily basis, and our annual target is a 3% reduction over all ELAP sites. I'd like to thank the Board and County Administration for funding a seven-person exotic plant control crew in the FY '18 budget. They're just doing a wonderful job, tremendous help. They've already eradicated, I want to say, 1,400 acres of exotics over the past 16 months, and I feel very confident that we're going to meet that 3% reduction target over the coming years. So again, thank you for that. We also oversee large-scale habitat restoration projects within disturbed areas from a wetland standpoint, whether it's freshwater wetland creation or saltwater creation. Our partners have been primarily the Water Management District, EPC, and DEP. When it comes to upland habitat restoration, it's typically just Hillsborough County or in some cases, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. They've helped us out there as well. But when we talk about restoration, upland restoration and wetland restoration are both critical. You can't have one without the other. Also, we coordinate public access improvements. This includes the creation of trailheads, signage, brochure racks, small parking areas. We want to make sure that folks are able to get out and see the land that they're paying for, you know? It's important. It's also important to have that balance between a passive use and access. So we struggle with that sometimes, but I think we do a pretty good job of balancing public access with protection of the site. And then finally, something that I'm pretty excited about is that we provide environmental programming options over multiple ELAP sites, as well as our conservation park system like Lettuce Lake Park, E.G. Simmons, and others. Just last year, we, I think we had 127 programs that brought in over 3,800 participants, and those were all environmental programs throughout our ELAP sites and our conservation parks. So environmental programming is really important now, and I think from a revenue standpoint could be critical to us in the future as we do more programming, things like overnight hiking, overnight camping, and we have a lot of ideas. And we'll come back to you later on when we talk about potential revenue streams, new services, new ideas for camping, camping cabins, all sorts of great stuff, but that's not for today. So when we talk about management, again, we talk about program revenue streams. So right now, on any site that we manage for the Water Management District, in other words, they own the property and we manage it for them, we receive a 50% cost reimbursement. That typically averages about $75,000 to $80,000 a year. We also have three active cattle leases on our sites, over 16,000 acres. That brings in $210,000 a year to the program. And something that we're very excited about is our new carbon credit, or what some might call carbon offset program. And back in 2017, you might remember that we entered into an agreement with the Oregon Climate Trust, and that agreement is going to pay us almost $1.2 million over the next seven years at the Lower Green Swamp Preserve for essentially doing what we're already doing, and that is protecting the site and making sure that we don't cut down any trees, vegetation, things like that. So it's a great program for us. We look to expand that in the future. So over the next four to five years, expect to see some more of these carbon credit opportunities come up on various ELAP sites. When we look at recurring expenditures, our operation and maintenance, as I mentioned, on an annual basis is paid for from the general fund. And when you look, and I'll have a slide later on this, when you look at our five-year acquisition list, I'll call it our wish list, we are probably only going to add about 230,000 to our annual operating and maintenance budget. Right now, our budget is around $3.2 million, but we feel like we can add 10,000 acres to the program and still keep the annual O&amp;M down to really a fraction of what it might normally be, and I'll explain that momentarily. So talking about ELAP management a little bit further, and I love this slide, the county's cost per acre of managing its environmental lands has actually decreased by almost 20% over the last 10 years. And FY '08, our expenditures were right at 2.6 million acres managed, just over 45,000. Cost per acre managed was at $58 per acre. Today, 10 years later, if you can believe it, we are at $2.9 million of expenditures. We manage 63,408 acres, and that's taken our cost per acre down to $46.85. So we're doing more with less. Of course, with the audit that we had last year, they did talk about, I won't say deficiencies, but I'll call it needs for the program to continue its management, and in some cases, to enhance management in certain areas like prescribed burning. Just real quick to show you carbon credit revenue at the Lower Green Swamp Preserve, we're getting our first installment, October 31st of this year, $128,700. And then in the fiscal years after that, up through FY '27, we're going to be getting over $1 million more. And that will all go back into the preserve for management and restoration activities. That's money that typically would have come out of the general fund or some other source. Now we're getting it as revenue. So we talked a little bit about the audit, and there were primary recommendations through that audit, which was performed by Barth and Associates. In fact, Dr. David Barth is with us today if you have any specific questions about that audit back from December. Dave and his team are great to work with. They also worked with the University of Florida and with county staff, looking at land management needs as well as land acquisition needs. And looking at land management, we'll say that the primary recommendation here is that staff utilize indicators of success to measure progress towards desired future conditions for our ELAP sites, and in particular, to adhere to the prescribed fire return intervals and the invasive exotic plant reduction goals that are outlined in the audit, and enhance funding accordingly to meet these objectives. Now, we've already talked about the invasive exotic plant control, and we're fine there. We have the crew, they're doing great, 3% reduction is well within sight. When it comes to prescribed burning, though, we have some challenges. The audit recommended that we increase our annual prescribed fire performance objectives from 3,700 acres to 9,142 acres on our ELAP lands, and they recommended that we do that by the year 2029. Well, in talking with Mr. Merrill and executive staff recently, we don't want to wait until 2029. That's a decade away. And the primary reason for that is with the growth in Hillsborough County, especially in central and south Hillsborough County, you have an increasing number of developments coming right up to the edge of ELAP sites. Many of these ELAP sites have to be burned. In fact, they all have to be burned. Some are more flammable than others. So we want to meet this objective now, or certainly within the next 12 to 24 months, as opposed to waiting for some disaster to happen in the year 2026, if I wait 10 years. So in order to meet the objective, we've requested funding in FY '20 and '21 to establish a dedicated prescribed fire team that will do three things. Number one, it's going to increase our ability to meet the referenced ecological objectives that were outlined in the audit. Number two, and most importantly, improve public safety by reducing the threat of wildfires in the ever-increasing wildland urban interface. And again, you look at some of these areas, whether we're talking about Riverview, Baum, Wyomma, Ruskin, Apollo Beach, Sun City, all those areas are experiencing a lot of growth, and we want to make sure that anybody who moves near or adjacent to an ELAP site is adequately protected. Number three, we want to limit the county's financial liability by reducing wildfire risk on ELAP lands. So based upon the recommendation from the audit, in FY '20, I have asked for equipment and personnel to fund the prescribed fire team. That initial cost will be $623,000. That includes a one-time cost for equipment. In FY '21, that goes down to $396,000, and it will certainly stay at that point, you know, moving forward. So I think it's important to do this for a lot of reasons, primarily for public safety. If you look at our prescribed burn acreage over the last, we'll say, five fiscal years, we average about 4,000 acres per year. That's about the most we can do. You can see that in FY '17, we did not meet the objective, nor did we meet it in FY '18. Primary reasons for that were weather-related. We had droughts in both years between the months of May, or I'm sorry, March and May, and then literally June was just like a washout. We had 10 to 15 inches of rain in June both years, so you go from extreme drought to extreme flooding, and that pretty much negates about five to six months out of the year that you can burn. So a lot of this is weather-dependent. You can also see we had some very good years. FY '16, we burned almost 5,600 acres. This year, we're projected to burn 6,200 acres. I would say, on average, though, those are outliers. Those are very, very good years. The average for us is 4,000 acres. And again, you look at California last year, the effects of their wildfires that resulted from what we call long-term fire exclusion. Really, there's two different sets of problems here. Number one is obviously a lack of prescribed burning in some of these areas, and number two, some of these developments were actually built in and amongst wooded areas that, again, had not burned in some cases for decades. So we don't want to have a repeat of that situation here. Obviously, conditions are a little bit different in California. You have mountains, you have the Santa Ana winds, but the concept is the same. If you don't do your prescribed burns on a routine basis, and now you have new development adjacent to it, you could have problems in the future. And just as a local example, back in 2006, I'm not sure if many of you remember this, Commissioner Hagan, I think you may have been the only person on the board at the time, but May 2006 is something that my employees will definitely remember. We had a 600-acre wildfire at the Golden Aster Scrub Preserve. Again, this is right near the intersection of Big Ben Road and Interstate 75. And what happened essentially is there was a spark off of a TECO power line that goes through the center of the property. Well, that little spark, which, you know, may have started a fire that was, you know, yay big, with westerly winds of about 20 miles per hour, turned that into a 600-acre wildfire. So it raged across the site, headed toward Interstate 75, and luckily, in the previous six months, we had burned two different units adjacent to the interstate. You'll see Unit 14, which is hatched, and then Unit 6B to the north of that, which is hatched as well. What happened there is because we had burned it recently, there was no plants, no fuel to burn. So the wildfire hit that particular area, couldn't burn anything, and so then, at that point, it headed north. And so instead of having a two-and-a-half-mile flaming front of fire going toward Interstate 75, it was basically isolated into two different areas, one at the northeast corner of the site and one in the central part of the site. There were about 45 pieces of equipment out there, 100 firefighters responded to the fire. It was a crazy day. There were no injuries, no loss of life, thank goodness, but I cringe to think what might happen today in a similar situation, because everything that you see east of 75, and it would be just off your screen, is now developed. All of those lands are developed. So prescribed fire is an extremely important tool for us to use to protect the public. Okay, we've talked about land management and some of those needs. Now let's go to land acquisition, and I'd like to talk about some of the recommendations that Barth and Associates provided, again, in concert with the University of Florida. And there's three bullet points here, but the first bullet point for me is probably the most important, and that is to instill a sense of urgency, to utilize additional county funding for land acquisition as approved by the voters in the 2008 ELAP referendum. That would include fee simple acquisition techniques as well as conservation easements. The consultant found that over the years, we've lost almost 15% of ELAP program lands that were initially approved for acquisition. They've been developed. I can tell you that just in the last seven or eight months since this report was completed, we've lost three additional ELAP-approved sites. They're all right near the urban services boundary down in that Riverview-Ruskin area. So if there's one takeaway message from this presentation today, it's that time is of the essence. Okay? We don't have years to wait. I don't know that we even have months to wait. Time is of the essence. Second bullet point, continue the emphasis on obtaining external funding from state and federal resource partners. We've done a great job with that, and I'll show you a slide in just a minute. And then finally, when we do acquire properties, we need to focus on connecting existing ELAP preserves. That is to maintain what we call landscape integrity, prevent habitat fragmentation. What you don't want are isolated preserves that's completely surrounded by development. Ultimately, they'll wind up losing their natural characteristics, be difficult if not impossible to burn, and you'll wind up in 10, 20 years with something like open green space as opposed to a functioning ecological system. And finally, as I mentioned, to ensure long-term manageability and health of natural ecosystems. So potential ELAP acquisitions are identified through an annual nomination process, and they have been now for 32 years through the ELAP program, and they're ranked according to set environmental and other criteria. Some of our highest-ranked approved ELAP sites that are in need of acquisition include Two Rivers Ranch, also known as Blackwater Creek, up in northeast Hillsborough County, Booker Creek Buffer Edition in northwest Hillsborough County, Cone Ranch Edition, which is about 2,400 acres, Fish Hawk Preserve in central Hillsborough County, Triple Creek Bomb Boyette Scrub Preserves, also in central Hillsborough. The Baum Scrub Preserve, which is right on the edge of that urban services boundary, this is one of the preserves that I'm probably most concerned about in terms of habitat fragmentation and being surrounded by development. of habitat fragmentation and being surrounded by development. And then finally, Upper Little Manatee River. We've been very successful with Swift MUD on a lot of joint acquisitions there, but we still have a lot more to do. So, looking at the ELAP audit again, they identified 29,000 acres of approved ELAP lands as high-priority acquisition needs. And nearly all of these prioritized sites focus on connecting or expanding ELAP-existing preserves. That's going to be key, connecting or expanding existing ELAP preserves. We don't want to buy small, little fragments in the middle of a sea of development.
Mr. Tuberville, before you go any further, Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick comment. I don't think this will require a motion, but if it does, please let me know. As Forrest just mentioned a few moments ago, in the recent year or two, we have lost a couple of sites that have been on our targeted list, and time is of the essence. And one of these properties, Brooker Creek Buffer Edition, has been on the top of our list for a couple of years now. I guess about a year or so, maybe a little longer. ELAP appraised the site for a little over $4 million, and Clearwater actually owns it. And they appraised it, or their minimum bid was $6 million. And so, we did not, we were unable to go after the project. A private company did place a bid on it, but it's my understanding this is, their due diligence period has been going on for nearly a year, and it appears that it might not be going anywhere. So, what I'm suggesting is, since time is of the essence, I would like for staff to reach out to Clearwater, to the private company, not to interfere with the contract or anything like that, but just to see if there's any way that we can acquire the environmentally sensitive part of it here. It's my understanding some, a small portion might be developable, but the majority of it is environmentally sensitive. So, I would just like for staff to have the ability to contact them, see if anything can be done. Also, it's my understanding there may be a couple of adjoining parcels that are suitable for ecological preservation, so possibly we can structure a larger preservation purchase. So, I don't know if that requires a motion, or just ask staff to do it.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. We're in a workshop. We don't have motions during workshops. Any objection with, for?
Is that okay, is that okay, is that okay with you, Mike?
Okay.
They don't want to interfere, they don't want to interfere with anything legally, but just reach out. Is this going anywhere? Can we have the ability to?
Any objection? Without objection?
Well, I have some questions.
Let me finish. Any objection with what Commissioner Hagan has asked at all? Are you objecting?
I'd like some questions about it first.
Okay, you recognize.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if this is a shooting range area?
Yes.
It is. Okay, because that's got serious issues with it in terms of the existing, as I understand, EPA and metal contamination and all involved in that, in the wetlands. And so, it seems to me that that is a really questionable piece of land to go after, especially at this time. And we had our opportunity before, and as I understand, there were some issues with that. And I know the community up there was really looking for us to purchase that before and didn't, but they said as soon as the shooting range got it, that then we would, they expected us to come afterwards. And so, I think, yeah, there are some questions. I would object to that, if that's a shooting range, because I think there are very serious considerations. I'd like to understand more about that as a priority. I don't think that that's a necessarily good priority without knowing more.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
I'm actually, more than surprisingly, familiar with this piece of property. And I do believe that, given there is a significant block of pristine land that we already own in that area, and that it is, has been on our list, the community would like to keep it on our list. From what I have heard, it's a way of feedback for the community. And the only way to protect it from further contamination would be to actually have it be acquired by ELAP. So, otherwise, we're going to find ourselves with a continuing deteriorating situation that might invade and further damage the ELAP land around it. So, I would like to support the inquiry about how we move forward on it.
Let me make a suggestion before I call on Commissioner Murman. It's obvious that Commissioner Kemp has some reservations about supporting what Commissioner Hagan has asked. When we finish with everyone in the queue, I'm going to ask to waive the rules, that we take a vote on it, so we can have it on record. That's okay with everyone? We don't normally take votes during workshops, but I'm going to ask that we waive the rules. You can vote to waive the rules or not. That's entirely up to you. But I'm going to ask for a motion. But we're going to continue now. Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm not opposed to the inquiry, but this is silver dollar. I was, it's in my district. I was very involved with this. Actually, I was on the side of the residence, and actually went out there at 8:00 on Sunday morning and could not believe what I was hearing. But, but, I will tell you, everything has calmed down. I think that they have, Silver Dollar is complying with, because we've been checking with the requirements we asked them to do. They went to code, and they had, you know, lists of things they needed to do. So, and I know the city of Clearwater. That is a huge issue because they want to unload the property, but I think it's an exorbitant amount of money. And they, I mean, it's a lot of money. So, we were trying to be reasonable. I thought we offered them a nice amount for the property.
We certainly did. I believe it was 4.6 million.
Absolutely. And nothing happened. They wanted, how much did they want for us?
6.2.
Yeah, it was.
Which wasn't supported by the appraisals.
Right, it's not supported by appraisal. So, I think, yeah, let's get the inquiry. I really don't want to stir the pot with Silver Dollar again, because I think we've gotten everything calmed down there. You all remember that, right?
No.
Well, you weren't, you two weren't here, but you remember all that?
We don't remember Silver Dollar at all.
I wasn't here, but I heard a lot of that.
Oh, yeah. So, but let's, yeah, let's look into it and see where we're at and come back.
I think we might have a couple of creative solutions to that issue.
I think it would be good.
The pollution issue.
And can I just ask, I mean, I think because Silver Dollar did, I mean, both sides did sit down. They tried to, they collaborated, reached, I think, an agreement. And I think I'd like to get some of those parties back together if we move forward on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you. The exact site in question is on the ELAP-approved list, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and it's gone through the rigorous, stringent process. It's been fully vetted in order to get there, correct?
Fully vetted, yeah. It was approved back in 2011.
Got it. I'm going to support Commissioner Hagan's request for an inquiry.
Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
Yeah, real quick, this is at the top of the ELAP list. Not only has it been approved, it's been at the top for years. There's a reason why it's there. The community wants us to acquire it. This is not about Silver Dollar. And I'm not suggesting that we spend more in the appraisal, or what is reasonable. I'm just saying, let's contact the parties, see if it makes sense, see if they're willing to lower the price, get a better deal. It's no deeper than that.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
I'm looking at the map of the ELAP priority acquisition on Slide 16. Is this the little parcel, looks kind of like a little S up in the northwest corner that has the priority acquisition slashing on it?
It is. And that contains the Clearwater property, the CB grows property, and an additional property just to the south. So, all combined, you're looking at roughly a thousand-acre addition to the Brooker Creek Preserve.
And the little red area is the Brooker Creek Preserve, right adjacent to it in the north?
Correct. And what doesn't show on here is just across the Hillsborough-Pennellis line, you have 9,500 acres. That is the Pennellis County-Brooker Creek Preserve.
And so, this priority slashing, that's, those are the lands that were identified by the university as priority in addition to the ELAP Committee and Site Selection Committee rankings.
That's correct. When you look at this map, there's really three areas to focus on. Number one, everything in red is acquired ELAP. Everything in green is approved ELAP. And then, everything that's hatched is priority acquisition areas that have been identified by Barthin Associates in cooperation with the University of Florida and the criteria that they use when they look at, you know, various counties or regions to identify critical parcels.
I served on the Site Selection Committee for many years, and I have full faith in that process for vetting the parcels. It's always been a very objective process done by really resource-motivated people. So, I would support inquiry into that as well.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. Thanks for those clarifications. I really wanted to understand what the property was, but I'm also, I have been very concerned, because I have read in the paper several times about the contamination of the wetlands in that area, about it being an ongoing EPA, not EPC, but EPA, problem. And I wondered about issues such as assumption of some liabilities on that and all. And I'm just wondering, since we appear to be moving forward here without really, it was not supposed to be explored this deeply here, I guess, but can you please just speak to that for a minute? Because you seem to have some information about that.
Sure. From my understanding, the majority of the contamination is along a creek system that is along, basically, the western border of the property. So, if we were to be able to somehow exclude that from the ELAP acquisition, then obviously, the liability for the county goes down to zero. There may be some other deal that we could reach with EPC or EPA if we were to acquire that piece, if that were a necessary portion of the acquisition. So, we'll explore both of those avenues. But again, we're not going to put the county at any risk, because we do understand that that area is contaminated with lead.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that and kind of understand how that played into the whole big picture, since I have heard and read repeatedly, nothing to do with the noise and all the other complaints that we've had, but just the acquisition of land that would, you know, possibly put us in a position that would be a problem without even having it raised as part of the issue. So, thank you.
We have a motion to waive the rules and take a vote during the workshop, please.
Some of?
As a motion by Commissioner Overman, I thought I heard you first. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Overman, to waive the rules and take a vote during the workshop. Seeing a further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Commissioner Hagan, you recognize?
Thank you. Just for staff to contact the parties involved, see Clearwater and the private company, I'm not even sure the name, whoever has the contract. Again, not to interfere with any contract or legal issues, but just to reach out to them to see if there's any interest in selling the environmentally sensitive portion to us, and then just to have the conversation. That's essentially all it is.
As a motion by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Overman and White, seeing a further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay. So, on this particular map, just wanted to show you that really, it's pretty basic. When you look at it, we are connecting existing ELAP preserves, especially along the urban services boundary. It's that kind of black and white hatched line that you see scrolling through the county. That's the urban services line. And so, one of our top priorities, especially in south and central Hillsborough, is going to be to go after those properties first, or at least as part of this, hopefully, initial set of bonds, and try to acquire as much of that as we can, especially those areas that are adjacent to ELAP preserves or connect other ELAP preserves. Because again, once it's gone, it's gone. And we want to make sure that we do this in a logical, methodical way, so that we can acquire the lands that are most endangered first. So, talking about state and other participation, over the years, we have spent approximately $262 million to acquire that 63,408 acres. $175 million of that has come directly from the ELAP program. $87 million has come from partnering agencies. That's primarily Swift MUD and DEP through their Florida Communities Trust program. So, and that's great. That's, you know, almost one-third of that total $262 million coming from the state. So, that's the good news story. And if you look at the graph, you can see that from 1989 through about 2008, we had significant participation from the state. With the changing administration between 2008 and 2009 at the state level, the Florida Forever funding dropped off significantly. So, that's why you see over the past nine years that we have unfortunately had no state participation, or very little state participation from the Florida Forever program. The only reason I mention that is that moving forward, I just want to make sure that the expectations are realistic and that I would not expect a lot of state funding for the next few years. That's not to say it couldn't happen. I just want to make sure that you know what's happened over the last nine years. So, looking at the ELAP program in terms of available funding, we do have $1,500,000 available in ad valorem funds. That is specifically identified for Two Rivers Ranch. Hopefully, we will be successful with that acquisition at some point. There's a $15 million placeholder, essentially, in our budget. No bonds have been issued yet for that, but it's important to note that it is in the budget and that no additional millage is necessary to fund the $15 million bond issue. So, what will that $16.5 million get us moving forward? Well, it should get us, hopefully, Two Rivers Ranch Phases 1 and 2. Each of those phases is approximately 1,200 acres. The Little Manatee River Weld property, we're expecting to close on that within the next month or so. That's already been approved by the board. English Creek HCC property, they're wanting to sell us 119 acres. We think we can make a deal on that, $600,000. Lake Dan Cypress Trails property, that's 20 acres that connects two different areas of the preserve. Cost on that is $725. So, all told, when you look at those properties that are in what we call active negotiation, you're at about $14.5 million. That leaves just under $2 million left of available ELAP funding for other priorities. And let's look at those other priorities. That includes Two Rivers Ranch Phases 3 to 5. That's 4,600 acres. Estimated cost there is $16 to $30 million. Bahia Beach Coastal Restoration, also known as the Riverton Parcel. Commissioner Smith, I think you're aware of that one. That's 90 acres. Price on that is $5 to $6 million. Triple Creek Greenway, that connects Bomboyette Preserve with two other preserves, critical piece of property, but it won't be cheap. Our estimate is $3 to $4 million. Seller's at $5 million currently. Don't know if we'll get it, but we'll try. Cone Ranch Edition, that's on the other side of Lower Green Swamp. The owners have expressed an interest in a conservation easement. That would be over 2,200 acres, and we estimate somewhere between $5 and $9 million for that. Also, Brooker Creek Buffer Edition, as we talked about earlier, the Clearwater property, that's 425 acres. We estimate the cost on that somewhere between $2 million and $5.6 million. The other sort of unknown part of this is other priority ELAP parcels that are on the map. Typically, you know, once a month, we get a call from a landowner saying, hey, look, I'm interested in selling. Are you interested in buying? And if it's a priority parcel, of course, if we have the money, we're going to say yes. Let's talk. And we estimate- Let's talk. And we estimate that that's going to be in the 30 to 40 million dollar range. So all told, from an acquisition standpoint, we're somewhere between about 61.5 million and 94.4 million. We'll just say 60 to 90 million to give it an even number. Looking at it, though, from an annual operating and maintenance standpoint, if you go all the way to the right-hand side of your column, because two of those major acquisitions would be conservation easements, Two Rivers Ranch and the Cone Ranch Edition, which both of those total 9,200 acres, the operating and maintenance costs for county staff is almost nothing because all we would be doing is monitoring their land management activities because the landowner is responsible for all land management and a conservation easement. It's not county staff. So we basically do a monitoring report twice a year. And that decreases our responsibilities and our management costs tremendously when it comes to those kind of sites. So that's why I said earlier that we're going to look more toward conservation easements whenever possible in the future. And again, a conservation easement, basically what we're doing is we're stripping off the development rights from the property. The landowner still owns the property, is still responsible for maintaining the property, but the county has a perpetual conservation easement over it so that it can never be developed. And then with that conservation easement and that agreement, we have a management plan that is written by county staff or FWC or a combination of agencies to make sure that that property is maintained in a relatively natural state and not altered from its current condition. So we think that's a useful tool. And then finally, this will be my last slide before I turn it over to Kevin Bricki. I think we all just know as human beings that, you know, these environmental lands have intrinsic value. I mean, it's just kind of part of our nature. We know that they're important. But some folks will say, well, you know, you're taking land off the tax rolls, you know, what's the economic impact? So as part of our 2017 master plan for our department, I had the consultant, which ironically enough is Barthin Associates, in cooperation with the University of Florida and EPA, take a look at the value of the ecosystem services provided by the 63,408 acres that we currently own and manage. And to my surprise, these numbers are really, really good. We have four different areas: flood protection, climate regulation, air pollution removal, and water quality regulation. And altogether, these total just under $100 million annually of ecosystem services. Now, when you think about the ELAP program going back 32 years, we spent approximately $262 million to acquire these properties. So one way that you could look at it is that at $100 million annually, the program pays for itself within two and a half to three years. And not only has it done that, but it's done that multiple times over the last 32 years. So I just want to point that out, that these lands not only have intrinsic value, but they also have economic value for all of the citizens of Hillsborough County. And of course, things like water quality, flood protection, those, you know, those directly impact everybody. Water quality from the rivers to Tampa Bay, to fishing, to our economy, all of that. It's all interconnected. And just finally, that number does not include an increase in property values. I think we all know that if you live adjacent to a nature preserve or a park, typically the land or the lot is going to come with a premium. Of course, when you resell that property, you can resell it at a higher value because you're not backing onto somebody else. You're backing onto a preserve. The ecotourism numbers, we haven't even had a chance to fully look at those yet, but I think those numbers would be impressive. And again, just general quality of life. So I wanted to leave you with that. And from there, I will turn it over to Kevin Bricki.
Before you leave, Mr. Tavert, we have some questions.
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Yeah. Slide number 14. If you look at that one.
Yes. There you go.
That's a little different than what's in our, what's in our package. It has a little...
Mr. Chairman, may I? You might, you might be looking at our original copy. We had a new copy at the dais.
This one?
There was a newer one.
All right. Never mind. Thank you.
Commissioner White, you recognize?
I'm actually in the queue for the end. I'll just re-enter.
Commissioner Olman, you recognize?
Okay. A couple of things I want to, this is actually my second ELAP presentation, so I'm learning a lot and appreciate what we're doing here. This is a perfect example of a great opportunity to add to our wonderful, if we ever figure it out, health at all policies process, is the idea of addressing the economic benefits that you speak of as a result of purchasing the property or managing the properties we have now. Not only is it economically feasible, but it also does help the health of all of our people living here. Earlier today at the EPC meeting, we discussed the recent change in legislation that offers county lands as an opportunity to do wetlands mitigation. Do these lands qualify if we own them? Okay.
Yeah. We've actually done several wetland restoration and mitigation projects with EPC over the years. So there's a history of that.
Okay. Because recently, there was the change in legislation allows for if there is a need for wetland mitigation. And because, you know, on your map, there's a checkerboard of where lands are and where lands aren't, it would seem as though there would be a reasonable opportunity if we had an inventory of wetland in need of restoration, where we could use those credits to ask, you know, those that need the mitigation to help in the cost of mitigating that and restoring those properties. So if one of the ways we best manage this process is to manage those credits in those areas that need restoration and have that impact work in our best favor, that would be a great opportunity to help offset some of the management costs. Question about the exotic species control?
Yes.
What typically are you controlling? Punk trees or, you know?
Oh, wow. Okay.
Everything, lots, lots of stuff.
I could probably go on for an hour on that.
Any of it that can buy product can be sold for product, or is that not possible?
They sell Melaleuca trees.
Yeah, that's...
Have you heard of Melaleuca? Yeah.
Yeah, I bought a lot of that.
As tea tree oil.
It's very expensive mulch, you know. So that's why I'm asking.
Yeah. Anytime you see tea tree oil in a health food store or just a grocery store, it's typically Melaleuca oil. Yeah. But beyond that, I don't think there's really any market for any of our exotics.
Okay. Just curious. I was just always looking for a way to recycle and raise revenue in some way, shape, or form. I appreciate the whole concept of an additional $230,000 due to, on your acquisition list as far as increased cost. But your comment about the cost of equipment being one time of approximately $200,000 in the first year and then $30,000 in additional other equipment. So there's like forever life on this equipment?
Typically, anywhere from seven to 14 years.
Okay.
Depending upon the piece of equipment.
You know, the planner in me is like, okay, when does that number come back around? Okay. And I really appreciate the idea of protecting those lands and having the priority list because we are constantly asked to approve land, I mean, some of, all of us, because we sit on the Land Use and Planning Commission, to develop certain areas that, you know, clearly look like, ah, what are we doing? So I appreciate that. But I just wanted to kind of clarify the wetland mitigation opportunity to have that inventory and ready to go when we get an opportunity to serve a citizen that is looking for mitigation resources to restore.
Sure, sure. We do have a couple of sites that we've inventoried and I can share those with you, maybe another time.
Sure. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Tavert, thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Bricki. He's at the end.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kevin Bricki with Management and Budget. And today, I'm going to take you through a few slides to talk about the current ELAP debt and millage that we have now and some plans for the future or some opportunities for the future on that same topic. As Forrest mentioned, the ELAP debt and millage is associated with the 2008 referendum, which authorized the issuance of up to $200 million of bonds. Currently, we have two series of bonds that are outstanding, the 2009 A and Series 2009 B ELAP bonds. They were issued for about $59 million. The debt service is funded by the millage that is assessed against countywide property. The current tax base is about $95 billion. The current millage rate is 0.0604 mills. That is equivalent to $6.04 per $100,000 in taxable value. And for a house with a taxable value of $250,000, that is a cost of $15.10 annually. Currently, that levy at that millage, 0604, generates almost $5.8 billion in tax revenues. And for the current two series, the 2009 series, the annual debt service is approximately $3.5 billion. Now, over time, particularly since 2012, we have had some good growth in the tax base. And in that yellow, in the blue line, you can see how our ELAP revenue has increased at that millage rate. And the debt service has remained relatively flat. That then creates some possible opportunities that we'll be moving on to. The Series 2008, 2009 and A and 2009 B and potential new money bonds. The 2009 A bonds will be paid off on July 1st of this year. That's an $11.3 million in bonds will be paid off. The Series 2009 B bonds, we plan to refinance in August 2019 in order to obtain lower interest rates. The current atmosphere for interest rates is still very favorable. $48 million in bonds will be refinanced, and the final maturity date of those will be unchanged at 2039. That's where the Series B bonds currently are. They'll stay there. Potential new money bonds for other acquisitions as well. The final maturity date of those, should that choice be made, would be 2049, 30 years. So this graph is going to take us through opportunities. As we go through, we'll be looking at increasing levels of acquisition, increasing dollars for acquisition. The first slide here looks at $15 million more for acquisition. The millage rate stays constant at 0604. The revenue is $5.76 million, just under the 5.8 as we talked about earlier. The debt service would rise a little bit to $3.75 million. And we would still have $2 million of revenue generated by that 0604. Given that that exists, if another $30 million were on the table for a total of $45 million in new money, that could still be fit within the existing millage of 0604. The revenue is still $5.76 million at today's levels. The debt service is 5.56. There's a little bit left over, but it fits within the current millage. Let's go a little further. Another $30 million for a total of $75 million of money for new acquisitions. In this case, the millage would need to rise in order to pay for the debt service. The debt service over 30 years would be $7.14 million. So in order to raise that, the millage would need to increase from 0604 to 0749. That is an increase of $1.47 million for that increase of millage of .0145. And on a $250,000 house, that would be $3.63 annually would be the cost. Now, I'm going to take you to another slide that walks us through the same sort of scenarios, but just has a little bit different look. Here's where we would be with the 2009 refunded bonds. The current millage that would be required to pay that debt service is .0335. Our current millage is .0604. So if we add at the same intervals $15 million of new money, our required millage goes up, but it's still, again, below the current millage. If we had a total of $45 million, the 15 plus the 30 in the previous set of slides, again, we can still maintain that millage and meet the debt service that would be required for the $45 million. And again, if we went beyond the $45 million, that would require a millage increase to meet the debt service. And here again, the same amount, $75 million, .0749 above the current millage rate. And that, again, on a $250,000 house, would be $3.63 increase in property taxes on an annual basis. So that is a quick look at our current debt structure and some opportunities.
Mr. Bricki, thank you very much. Appreciate that. We do have some members in the queue. Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you very much. This was a great presentation. Mr. Bricki, I do have a couple of questions for you. There's, and I hope you have, I know I'm catching you off guard here. I didn't get a chance to catch you ahead of time, so I hope you have this information at least available off the top of your head. There's been talk of levying five more cents in gas tax. There's also been talk of levying the six cent bed tax. What would each of those provide in terms of annual revenue to the county?
The five cents, second option, of fuel tax raises about $29 million. It needs to be shared with the municipalities. And after sharing, the B O C C's portion would be about $19 million.
Okay.
A cent on the...
That's about $6 million a year, isn't it?
A little bit more than $6 million, yes.
Okay. Well, let me just, let me just say that I am a proud Republican and a proud conservationist. And those two labels do not have to be mutually exclusive. My constituency does not want to have their taxes raised. That is a political reality. And I'm looking to some conservation-minded colleagues on the other side of the aisle to ask for your support on what I'm about to talk about and to work with me on this because if I'm successful here and I can get this to come back to the board, I very much want to be able to vote in favor of doing everything that we can for ELAP. And if you can support me, I think that it would be a strong bipartisan effort and send a strong bipartisan message. Number one, I want to, I want to go, I want to support the $30 million debt bond issue and the accompanying debt service. That's a no-brainer. We can do that without raising taxes. What I would humbly like to ask for your support on for my colleagues... What I would humbly like to ask for your support on, for my colleagues on the other side of the aisle, and I'll make a motion if I sense that the support is there, is that I can see the writing on the wall, that that gas tax and/or bed tax is likely to pass. What I'd like to ask for your support on is that if either one of those two pass, that we can use some of those revenues to free up, to free up some ad valorem revenues to...
Let me interrupt you.
Okay.
You're putting a bed tax in, to a tax that the majority of that tax is not paid by the citizens of Hillsborough County.
Okay, then let's talk about the gas tax, because we're talking about 19 million there. That's a lot of money.
If you don't mind, let's, let's take the bed tax out of the equation.
I'm fine with that.
Because that's not paid by, by, that's paid by visitors that come to Hillsborough County.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay?
Okay, so, okay, so on the gas tax, we're talking $19 million. And if I'm just doing my back-of-the-napkin calculation here correctly, we only need an additional $1.38 million in annual revenues to be able to pledge, to, to have to pledge to go up to a $75 million bond issue. So I know we could find $1.38 million in projects to fund with the gas tax to free up some general fund revenue to make available, to do the $75 million bond issue. I humbly ask my colleagues on the other side of the aisle to support that. Again, it's a political reality for me, you know, to, to, to be able to, 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 that I can't, that I can't support an increase in millage. So, so if you can support me there. Mr. Merrill, I just want to make sure I'm doing the math right here. I got that from slide, I jotted down 610 and, well, actually, 26, slide 26. I'm taking 7.14 million minus 5.76 million, and that's a difference of 1.38 million.
The, well, we'd have to do a little research on the, the gas taxes are restricted revenue, and we would have to find that dollar amount of money.
That's funded, that's funded with general revenue dollars to free up the general fund revenue dollars.
Correct, right. But if we can do that, so, so the only thing, yes, so the answer is if we can find that way to do a swap, basically.
That's what I'm asking for essentially, is a, is a swap. If, if that passes to move some things over to being funded by the gas tax that would, that are already funded with general revenue, free that up to do the bond issue. I'll listen to the, to the comments. If, Mr. Chair, if I sense that the support's there, I'd like to be recognized again for, for two motions, actually.
I'm next.
I know. I'm just thinking before I get to you. Go ahead.
Okay, all right. Interesting. I hadn't been thought, thinking about that, but I did have a question that relates to where we could find, or may or may not be considered in this. Previously, you said that there was revenue coverage, and you were using millage as our revenue source.
Yes.
We now have the carbon credit. Have you considered that as part of the revenue generation in this?
For the slides that I just showed you, this one is purely looking at ad valorem.
So it is not taking into consideration the carbon credit?
Well, the carbon credit would be, would offset some of the operating costs in the general fund.
We're planning on using that to pay for operating costs.
Okay, that's why, I'm just trying to figure out which part of the visit, capital versus operations, so I'm trying to figure out where that goes. And, and the, and the difference in the refinancing rates on average right now, are looking at what? As far as you're doing the refi versus a new issue and rolling in the, the existing debt?
Right, that's where we're getting some of that first $15 million is part of the refunding and also the extension to 2049, so.
Okay, understood.
That's where we're getting that.
All right.
So a little bit of annual savings.
Okay, even with underwriting costs and everything else?
Yes, oh, yes, that's net present value savings, yes.
Okay, and then, yeah, I have, I don't really have a desire to raise millage, but I don't know how much of the gas tax would actually be qualified to cover some of this. But if we're, if we're figuring out how to move, you know, my cheese and yours, I'd be interested in figuring it out. Because the lands that are sitting vulnerable right now to development, that, that an ELAP purchase, current ELAP purchase could provide, you know, maybe we do go on a recession in a couple of years and the lands get cheaper, but that's cheaper than, more expensive than it will be right now. I mean, we have an opportunity to protect land that we are immediately invading with the growth projections that we see. So, an, an aggressive method of actually doing that without necessarily harming cash flows, because that's my concern, is if we can find a way that we could swap dollars in a way that it doesn't, doesn't increase our millage rate for this specific purpose, I'd be interested in looking at that as an option.
So the only, the only thing I would just put on the table to consider is that there are a lot of other demands on the table. There's affordable housing, there's fire rescue.
How affordable housing, I get it, social services, all of it.
We, while, while I'm not at all throwing cold water on, I think it's, it's, it's a good approach. We've considered that in, in other ways. I, I think you need to see the full picture before you would actually make a commitment, because you may find that as, as, as meritorious as this is, when it comes down to how many dollars are left to pay the bills, and you're adding other, stacking other things on top of it that are important, like affordable housing, there's going to be some choices that need to be made. But it's not at all being critical of the idea, it's just, I, I think you need to see the whole picture before you make your final decision, although you could certainly take up a motion today, and that would, that would be helpful to us. That way, we can build it in. As we're beginning to finish constructing the budget, we can take that as a given and then try and structure around it, so.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I probably should have asked this during the, but I wasn't sure how the whole presentation was going to go. It's probably a question for Forrest first. And that's just about, can you just explain to me, in terms of costs and in terms of benefits, conservation easements, the difference between conservation easements and fee simple acquisition?
Sure. Well, with fee app, fee simple acquisition, it's just an outright acquisition.
Right.
Okay, so, we own it, we own all the real estate rights that are associated with that parcel, but we're also responsible for maintaining the property as Hillsborough County. With a conservation easement, we are essentially buying the development rights off of the property. We don't own it, we have a conservation easement over it, the landowner still owns it, but he is restricted by the conservation easement and by the conditions that we put in the easement itself, whether it's a land management plan. Obviously, we're going to put in there control exotics, occasional prescribed fire. It, it's tailored kind of to, to each side and their characteristics, but the, the general philosophy is, is that the landowner still owns the land, is responsible for maintaining it in an environmentally sensitive way, is not allowed to go in there and chop down, you know, additional areas of forest or wetlands or anything like that. So it essentially, essentially stays in its natural state and is required to be managed by the landowner as opposed to county staff.
Is that in perpetuity?
That is in perpetuity.
And what is the reduction in what we pay for the land under those conditions?
It, it varies. It could be as low as 50%, it might be as high as 70% of fee value.
So if, if someone does that with a conservation easement, and they sign it over in perpetuity for development rights, they're doing that because they want to see the land preserved beyond them. They can pass it on to their heirs, and...
That, that's correct. Yeah, it's usually a unique situation, typically with a larger landowner, a rancher, for example, who may want to continue that activity for the foreseeable future. Perhaps a family member wants to continue that activity, so it, it is unique, but we, we find ourselves in a unique position now of having two of those potential conservation easements on, on the table.
And I just, I guess this is something for another time, but I would just, I'd like to see that also as a tool in our development packages for kind of when we look at land development, I, that has never been used for, in any way, well, you're saying this is the first times in the ELAP program, but I, I know other places use that when they do their different zoning, or, you know, at some point in that, and I would like to see that be something that we could incorporate for more opportunities. So that's kind of a little bit about why I was asking for that. Just in terms of the financing, I do have some questions, too. One is that actually with the, I would think with the bed tax, that because the six cent is more open, and certainly open to purposes of tourism, that maybe perhaps part of the bed tax could be for ecotourism purposes. I'd like to just see if that is the case, if we could look into that, because that, to me, seems like a genuine use of it. And certainly, we do have people that come here for ecotourism purposes that, you know, stay and use the hotels and generate the bed tax. So I'd certainly like to understand that a little bit better and that possibility. In terms of the gas tax, as I said, there's 19 million, that is restricted to unincorporated Hillsborough County, and that's going to be a very much reducing over the years as we go all-electric. Certainly reduced, I think, you know, we've all acknowledged that that's a reducing source of, of revenue over the years. But also, just in terms of the ELAP program and management and acquisition, that is all a, I understand it's a specific bonding, but it's also, there's two general revenue funds. One's unincorporated, that's the gas tax. The ELAP and ELAP management, that is the countywide, isn't it? So, so that is, so, so we're talking about two different general revenue sources, so I'm not sure that those two revenue sources can be mixed or used in this way. That's why I, I, you know, I will do anything to have, and I, the value of ELAP lands and the value for our insurance and the value for our acquisition is, I will do anything with that. I'm just looking at what I understand to be the practicalities of the way the budget and the designations work. And so I'm looking here for anything, the things that we can do. So here's another thing I don't understand. In 2000 and, and I'm just, I didn't get chances as a money question. In 2008, we, the, the voters pledged for 200 million in bonding, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so how much of that 200 million has been expended thus far?
59 million has been bonded, so there's an, an opportunity for about 161 million more.
Okay, so 161 million, because I, I mean, I thought there was, I just had the impression in my memory that months ago, when we talked about this before, there was, for me, anyway, there was, and I, I wanted to see everything expedited as quickly as possible. I was disappointed that during these lean years, that more wasn't acquired when the properties cost less than they did now. So I am interested, it makes sense to me, that we get everything we can as soon as we can of the, I guess if we went into another recession, you might have lower prices. I'm, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm disappointed that when they were, maybe, that we, that we didn't more aggressively. I'm not sure the process, how much you can speed up the process or, or work on it. I'm, just like to express that I would like to see all of that expended sooner rather than later, and move as expeditiously as we can, because that's what the voters, 79% of them, asked us to do. So in terms of this table that you have, and this is affecting our countywide, so, so what are, we're looking at this, and if we, if you can explain it to me in terms of these options, what, what, you know, my view of it is?
The, the options that were out, that on 26, slide 26, is, the first one is $15 million of, of new money. And as Bonnie mentioned, the refinancing and the extending of the term accommodates that, and it's accommodated within the current millage. The debt service goes up from about 5.5 million to about 5.76 million, or, from 3.5 million to about 3.75 million. There's still, within the millage, the current millage, there's still more possibility. And that's what, when we move over to the third column that says $30 million, and in parentheses, 45 million total, because we're also including that previous 15, so this is building, the, for $45 million of, of new capacity, the debt service would increase to $5.56 million. That's also accommodated in the current millage. Going beyond that, then that would require a higher debt millage. So that last column is $30 million more.
The 75 million is the only thing that would require a, a slightly higher millage.
On that slide, yes.
It goes from 0604 to 0749.
That's correct.
So you have that hundreds of, on the millage on that. So in order not to have the millage, that teeny slice of millage in our countywide, which I assume it may be in the next year would, I mean, we could even be offsetting that very shortly by increased value because of all the building that's going on? Wouldn't that be true?
Feature increased value also is, offers us more opportunities. And as values increase, we have to have the millage at least to pay the debt service.
Right.
So as millage, as values increase, that millage in the future could come down.
So if we put off some countywide expenditure in very little way in the next year with the increased value of everything that's being built all over this county, that we would, I can't imagine, we wouldn't be able to offset that in the next year by increased value. I mean, I'm saying if we, let's say, just imagine it, you know, I mean, some of the things, expenditures, we have countywide budget. We expend economic development. Let's say we did sliver off of economic development what their increase is this year, and instead, for one year, had it cover this, you know, and assuming that, you know, year's going out because of the massive increase in valuable, taxable value, that, you know, over the next year, that we would probably be able to make this.
Well, increased taxable value would cause the necessary millage to perhaps decline. But it's also important to remember that the millage that we're talking about for ELAP is completely separate from the operating millage in the general fund.
No, Kevin, I think what she's suggesting is that, that the higher increase in ELAP would be offset by a reduction of the millage in countywide. So, but, so I would say the same thing that I said before. That is certainly a valid way to do it, but you ought to see the, the whole picture, because there are, there are going to be recommended costs in the countywide fund that will consume the growth. So we have demands in both funds. The final decision is up to you, and what you're suggesting is a valid approach, but you need to see the whole picture before you make an isolated decision. That's my only advice.
Right, and so I'm just trying to address your concerns, because I would like to see us go up as much as possible. But, and so, I, I mean, I think we have to make choices about what those are, and it should be this board that's making those choices, and we should be seeing what those choices are exactly. If we did this much off this or that much, you know, that...
And that's what we're going to be bringing to, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to...
And we've already done that in private meetings with you.
Right, right.
I see people getting back in the queue, and when you're sitting in this chair, chairman, you're the last person that goes around 15 times. So Commissioner Merman is next, and Smith, Overman, and White again. So I will go ahead and not ask my questions now. Commissioner Merman, you're recognized. Merman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I really haven't said much, so, and I'm going to make this pretty brief. Millage is the holy grail, and I really don't want to destroy somebody's hope for the American dream, and that's owning a home. I think that's very sacred. It's one thing this board has always, and don't think that we should, think we need to take it very seriously. I would not be in favor of increasing any millage at all. I do have a question. Forrest, you said the operating cost would not go up on any of these. What's the operating cost if we do more acquisitions?
So if we are able to do the acquisitions that are on the list, let me go back to the slide real quick. Okay. So the acquisitions that are
Right there.
Currently in active negotiation, in addition to, on the second slide, those acquisitions as well, given the fact that a majority of the acreage would be under conservation easement, okay, and managed by the landowner, not by Hillsborough County.
Mm-hmm.
We are looking at approximately two hundred and thirty thousand dollar annual operating and maintenance increase to our budget.
And that's recurring, of course.
That would be recurring, that's correct.
Yes, so I think we have to always, in looking at that big picture that Mr. Merrill talks about, that's important part of the big picture. And I do want to ask you another question. So where we are with our ELAP acquisitions, and I understand now where we'd like to go, where are we, how is that balance? I mean, where do we stand, like, in relation to other counties, or, I mean, are we at a good place right now? Are we, should we pick up the pace, or what should we do?
That's a great question, and I've got Dr. Barth here. Dr. Barth, would you like to address that? I believe I have the answer, but I have the utmost confidence in Dr. Barth.
Hi, David Barth with Barth Associates. The, if I'm understanding your question, we did a comparison, Mr. Merrill asked us to take a look at what other counties' acquisition programs were doing, and it was interesting. So we looked at what we thought were nine or ten comparable counties to you, and you're at the top of the list in terms of local acquisition. The difference between you and other counties is you don't have the Everglades, you don't have a major river system, so you don't have the robust engagement of state and federal agencies that some of the other counties do. So if you look at local acres acquired, local acres as a percentage of total landmass compared to other counties, you're at the top of the list. If you look at total acreage acquired and total percentage of the landmass of the county, including state and federal lands, you go down significantly. So, you know, the issue is you guys are carrying a lot of the burden, or most of the burden yourselves in terms of acquisition. So one rule of thumb that people like to use is what's the total percentage of land protected among all the agencies, and in that case, you're not at the top, you know, you're, 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 I don't know where, exactly where you are, but the ten we looked at, you were ninth or tenth in terms of total mass of the community.
Okay, thank you very much, and your audit was great. I just think we need to look at this and balance it. I, I appreciate the environment. I've often talked to Forrest that we're not, if we did all this acquisition, I'll be honest with you, if it doesn't connect to parks or have some value to our taxpayers, I don't know why we're doing it. I'll be honest with you. It has to start showing some value, because when I do polling among my constituents, what their top issues are, the environment is never in the top five. So I just think we have to be very, very balanced, and it not, I'd like to see us do one or two great, big projects that connect everything, and not try to do everything and bite off too much of this apple at the expense of the other needs we have at the county. I mean, you know, if the ferry stays here, that's ten more million dollars. If we've got the fire stations, we've got the parks, we've got, I, the list is so long. And then on top of that, we've discussed eight, not including the two taxes, fee adjustments recently by this board. So we're about to acquire a new label. Come here and watch your fees go up. So let's just, I think, I like the approach Mr. Merrill wants to take. Let's look at the big picture, but we have to be very balanced at this, and I don't want to do too much at the expense of what our priority needs are at this county, and that's safety and security for our constituents and taxpayers. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. First off, I just saw this the other day. This is an international report of fifteen hundred pages. The Intergovernmental Science Policy Platform on Biodiversity and Ecosystem Services involved four hundred and fifty researchers across the globe, relied on fifteen thousand scientific and government reports, was a report given at the United Nations. And you might be surprised by this. It said, despite the dire risk from our burning of fossil fuels, it seems that climate change is only one, only the third biggest threat to existence of global species, including humans, at least for the moment. At the top of the list of the threats to our existence and life on this earth is land use, including development, logging, hunting, mining, and harvesting, and man's impact on the oceans and the lands. The wildlife habitat is shrinking that, and like Commissioner Kemp has mentioned, the, from, from the thin green thread, the wildlife corridors shrinking because of development, shrinking our wildlife habitat is causing species to go extinct, and that can collapse our whole ecosystem. And, and doing our part here in our county is as important for that as reducing our carbon footprint. ELAP is one of the, one of the things our county does really, really right. And, and whether or not we're, however we compete with the other counties is, is not as important to me as just getting it right at home. You know, it is a top priority of the voters who voted seventy-nine percent for this, for this referendum when it, when it came out. And, and I agree, we should, we should connect, but that's, that's the priority. We buy and preserve lands that connect, so we preserve these wildlife corridors. Forrest, we, one of your slides, I think, pointed out that fifteen percent of the existing ELAP, the, the, the lands that we had designated for ELAP acquisition as, as important have been developed, fourteen point nine percent. But didn't you also say, and I don't think you said it today, oh, that's the slide I was talking about before.
Yeah.
Didn't you expect that to double within the next three to five years? The fifteen percent of land that ELAP has designated as necessary for our wildlife corridors ecosystem has been developed, but do you expect that to double in the next three to five years? Is that correct?
It, it wouldn't be out of the question, especially for those properties along the urban services boundary.
And, and if we go to this seventy-five million target rate over the next five years, that's just for the very top of the list priority. That's not like for everything we ever wished we could have. That's, that's those priority designated lands that the university confirmed, our, our own committees and our technical advisory committee and our scientists, as the value of them. That's, that's the tippy top
Right.
Most crucial lands.
Yes, seventy-five million would get you approximately one quarter, maybe a little bit more than that, maybe thirty percent of the hatched lands that you see on this map. Total value of these properties is about three hundred and twenty-three million.
Maybe a little more if we can do some, stretch our resource. If we got the seventy-five million and stretched it out with some conservation easement strategies.
Sure.
And like that, we could, we could possibly stretch it a little bit. But, but this is, this is the, the key to the system, is, is these last little bits of, of hashed lands that, that do form the connection between the big pieces and do allow for, for the wildlife corridor. So I'm, I'm with Commissioner White and Kemp in doing whatever we can do. If, if we can work out some, some way to make everybody happy on both sides of the aisle to, to reach that, this goal, which I, you know, I don't see this as the top goal. I see this as kind of a bare minimum goal for the next five years, then count, count me in. Would you flip back to that slide fourteen?
Mm-hmm.
There, that photograph right there, it's got no credit on it.
I, I understand that.
I think it should be credited. I'm the one who took it.
It, it came straight from the ELAP calendar circa two thousand thirteen.
That's an award-winning photograph of Wolf Branch Creek by yours truly. Thank you.
All right, we're not getting into round three of commissioners in the queue, and I haven't said anything yet, so you're going to have to wait a minute, okay?
No problem.
Oh, okay. I, I don't, I don't look like an outdoors person, and I don't get outdoors that much anymore from playing golf, but I'm a, I'm a person that likes the environment and I love animals. I see we have an owl on here. I think that's a blue jay, a scrub jay, one of the jays. We have a bobcat and the whole works on here, and I understand the importance of ELAP and protecting our environment and things on those lines. But I think Mr. Merrill has, has said the operative word here. We've got to look at the big picture. You've got to realize, specifically those of you who just got on this board, that our budget may seem large when people talk about five billion dollars, but we don't have five billion dollars to spend. When we start funding these monies to every aspect we have to fund those money to, including our constitutional officers, our budget starts to shrink. So we can't sit here and start saying we're going to spend here money, here money, here money, there. Yesterday, the majority of you decided that you wanted to keep the ferry afloat, okay? So you're going to have to look at the dollars there. We don't know if it's thirty-six million dollars we have to put out there, fifty million dollars we have to put out there, seventy-five million. But we start talking about the BP money, that's on the drop in the bucket that we're going to have to utilize. You talk about the gas tax, that's restricted. That could very well have to go toward the ferry if it continues down the road, I shouldn't say road, down the water, it's going down. You can't, you can't bank on that. Plus the fact, if you're going to have that ferry, we're going to have to dip into the budget probably even more, because the figures that the gentleman got up here said yesterday may not be the true low figures that we're talking about, could be even more. I'm going to call him Mr. Merrill to talk about the bed tax, because I don't think we should be looking at the bed tax at all. That bed tax dollars, that extra cent, six cent, has been earmarked for where it should go. I can't remember everything that's, that we've talked about, Mr. Merrill, but could you talk about where the, I can't think of the committee I'm on right now, have looked at utilizing those dollars specifically, specifically with our tourism, Visit Tampa Bay, because we want to bring those dollars in, more people into Hillsborough County to utilize our beds, the mere fact that it is so woefully underfunded compared to its colleagues across the state. Can you talk about that, just a few more minutes, again?
Mm-hmm, yes. Well, the county commission is the one who, you're the ones who make the final decision on how the money gets spent in any of the tourist taxes, including the new one. The Tourist Development Council, which is made up of representatives of the hotel industry of the three cities, and the chair sits on, on the committee.
And the mayor.
And the mayor. They make recommendations, and they, and they present a budget to you all for decision, which is ultimately yours. So far, they have recommended that up to thirty percent of the new penny be used for, essentially by Visit Tampa Bay for additional marketing. They have not yet taken any action formally on the remaining seventy percent because they felt that it was too early to do that. The main thing was just get the tax in, in place. However, in sort of informal discussions that Ron Barton has had with the members of the, of the committee, there are other needs that they will recommend to you, which you don't have to accept, but again, you would want to hear those recommendations because it's a committee that, you know, is made up of folks who have to levy the, levy the additional penny, and representatives of the three cities. So we will be bringing back to you their other recommendations for the use of the tax, and so some, some of those would, would involve, perhaps, there's an ongoing need for funding of the convention center, and I think that will be one of the, one of the items that's brought back. There'll be a number of them that, again, you have to consider, you don't have to accept, but you'll at least want to hear them before you take action to use the money in a, in a particular way.
Thank you, Mr. Merrill, and that's, that's why I cannot support us taking any part of that bed tax until the TDC comes back with recommendations, and we look at how we're going to spend those dollars specifically to enhance our tourist development area with our partners, being the hotels and, and convention center, because they're, we're, we're booming at this point in time, and that's, that's important. I, I cannot support looking at the bed tax. I know we don't want to talk about millage at all, because even though I'm not a Republican, I'm a moderate Democrat. One time they wrote about me as a moderate Democrat, I didn't know I was moderate, but they said I was. But the last time this millage was increased was ten years ago, and we, and the price of the land is not the same as it was ten years ago. So if we're going to talk about purchasing environmentally sensitive land, I know we don't want to talk about increasing millage, but I'm going to ask this question to someone. If it increases with the page sixteen, was it sixteen or twenty-six, which one was it? Twenty-six. The thirty million of seventy-five million total, that increases point zero one four five on an average, what is, what, how much does that bring in, and then what's the cost? I think I saw a slide you talked about, a two hundred thousand dollar home or something on those lines. What's?
It would bring in about a million and a half dollars
Okay.
Annually, and on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, it would be three dollars and sixty-three cents annually.
Annually.
Yes, sir.
Okay, three dollars and sixty-three cents. I know that you don't want to raise taxes. That, three dollars and sixty-three cents, come on, let's be realistic, folks. Nothing is the same as it was in two thousand nine. You can't, you can't, how much was the price of gas in two thousand nine? How much is your car priced in two thousand nine? How much is the house in two thousand nine? I know you don't want to raise taxes, but if you want to buy land, if you want to preserve this land, you've got to bite the bullet somewhere. You just can't, talk about affordable housing. We're talking about ten million dollars this year. Next year, you want to put another ten million dollars in there, but the economists are saying next year might be the time, the downturn of our economy. What are we going to do? Just think about it. Now, I've said that, let's get back to round three. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. You queued it up quite well. You know, on slide twenty-two, we talked about the ELAP program and showing where the debt service stayed level from two thousand twelve to two thousand nineteen, and yet the revenues increased to by what appeared to be a two point three, two point three million dollar cash flow positive. So I'm going to assume that when we look at one of these other slides, if I can keep it straight, where we were looking at expenses associated with management of those lands, that in two thousand eight, the actual expenditures were two point six million, it looks like, and we're anticipating those expenditures to be two point eight million in two thousand eighteen, or at least was that on... Or at least, was that on slide seven? Am I reading that correctly?
Slide seven was two-point-eight million dollars.
It's showing, so while the program appeared to be, initially, it looked like, from one slide, it looked like it was cash flow positive. When we're looking at the actual expense of managing the program, it's not as cash flow positive as, as it appears.
Well, the diff, the difference is, is that the operating is in the county-wide general fund and, and paid from that fund, which is a separate millage from the, the voted debt service.
So just to be clarified, 'cause I can see your question, it's a coincidence that those numbers are similar?
That's what I'm thinking. Are we, are we keeping the cash flow positive revenue from?
Right, the.
From the debt service actually funding ELAP and not commingling that with other funds?
Right, any excess revenue from the debt millage on page twenty-two, as you mentioned, does stay separate, and we are keeping that apart. The operating part of the ELAP program does not come from these monies.
Doesn't come from the debt service?
It does not come from the debt service.
Why not?
Because the, um, millage is only for debt service and the initial restoration. That is all we can use that for.
I see, okay.
That debt service millage.
Okay.
And you can see that in the early years, the revenue actually declined slightly.
Yeah.
When property values declined. So we need to make sure that there's always sufficient revenue over the debt service, as you know.
Okay, yeah, and I, that's part of the reason why we have our amazing debt bond ratings. Thank you very much for doing such a terrific job on that. And we don't wanna jeopardize that, obviously.
Right.
But I do, to your points earlier about making sure we pay attention to the big picture, I, I do think that it is important to make, you know, protecting our environmental areas, especially those pathways that are critical to keeping our wildlife, to have the channels they need to migrate. Uh, you're right, the but, loss of biodiversity in, in the Florida region is critical to the success of a little match of our agricultural communities. Uh, you know, our beekeepers can't do what they need to do if we kill off everything that the bees flower on. And, and it is important to make sure that we keep our lands congruent and moving forward. But to mix up the dollars with bed tax as well as gas tax is a little concerning to me when we have other things that are coming up. For example, bed tax might assist us in covering the cost of next year's, you know, WWE event that will not have the federal subsidies of the cost of police and, and, you know, all the things that go along with hosting a big event that we get with the NFL. And yet, we still provided some funding to help with the NFL. So I think it is important for us, before we start negotiating where we're gonna start spending money to be able to do this, I think we do need to see the big picture. But it's not to say that I don't think it's critically important that we fund this at, for two, or two primary reasons. One, obviously, for protection of lands, but also due to the fact that we are at an opportunity ti, opportune time at low interest rates to take advantage of a fin, a long-term financing, to be able to invest for a long-term future. And that, these, these moments in time don't exist very often, and we are there. You know, we've had low interest rates for now ten years that I'm going, still scratching my head going, "How is this possible?" Um, you know, and that's what I do for a living, and so, uh, other than this. Sometimes I'm beginning to wonder, but, um, no, seriously, interest rates are at an opportune time for long-term financing of a critical infrastructure part of what Florida's about. And so, while I think it is important to, I do recognize the importance of looking at the big picture. So thank you.
Mr. White, you're recognized.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Smith, I, I jotted down a, a note. I, I like how you said that this would just be a step. Um, I, you know, I, uh, when I was on the school board, I had a, a fellow school board member that used to like to use this saying that you, you can't eat an elephant in one bite. And Mr. Republican here probably needs to be careful with that statement, 'cause you guys can devour me if I'm not careful. But, um, Mr. Merrill, I forgot to ask you, um, a couple of questions when I first had the floor. Um, Mr. Turberville mentioned some one-time needs in terms of equipment and whatnot.
Mm-hmm.
And then he also mentioned, um, the potential need for an increase in his operating revenue.
Mm-hmm.
What if any of that is, is gonna be, um, in the, the recommended budget? Worked into the recommended budget?
Uh, all of it.
All of it'll be worked into the recommended budget?
Yeah, after hearing the full presentation and having a lengthy discussion, I, it's, it's, it goes to sustainability and we just need to, to do it.
Well, that, that means I'm only gonna have one motion. Mr. Chairman, are the, the rules still waived?
Um, no, it was just for that particular motion.
I'll move to waive the rules as my fir, I will have two, one including that.
As a motion to waive the rules to allow a vote at the workshop by Mr., by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Kemp. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
So I've listened very carefully to not only board discussion, but to Mr. Merrill's sentiments as well. And you can see all the cross-outs and scribbles here. This is, this is the Frankenstein motion. But I'm gonna take a stab at it. I move to, uh, direct staff to present a budget that includes debt service for forty-five million dollars in bond issues for ELAP within the current budget parameters, and to recommend, as part of the budget process, various options to the board for, um, increasing the funding for a seventy-five-million-dollar bond issue without raising millage.
As a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Kemp. Is there any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Merrill, do you wanna discuss the motion? Did you want to, drew up for something else? Commissioner Kemp, you're in the queue, but you asked for something else?
That's for. That pertained to the discussion we were having before, but I still want us to have some comments afterwards. Not on the motion.
There's no further discussion on the motion. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Mr. White, you still have the floor.
I yield the floor, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to speak to some of the points that were, um, made earlier that I think it's important to speak to and that we, um, let constituents and res, residents of Hillsborough County understand and know. And that's that the acquisition of these lands are not only important for all the reasons that we think of typically, and, and biodiversity and our protection of our wildlife is a huge one that we need to be thinking about here. But, and, as well as the, um, pleasure and enjoyment and, um, how special it is to have these around us. But, um, for very, for those who don't appreciate it, um, our insurance rates are reduced in this county tremendously by our acquisition of ELAP lands. We, um, can sustain ourselves in resilient, and, um, we do much better in flooding because of the acquisition of these ELAP lands. So I think it's really important for us to understand and communicate those benefits that are very real benefits, um, when we acquire these lands. I'd also want to dispel, um, because I keep hearing about it, but it's just not accurate in terms of us raising, um, our taxes or being a high-tax place. What we're looking at are fees that are application fees, mobility fees, school impact fees. Those are fees that developers pay, um, here. And even if we raise them to whatever recommended levels I've seen, they are so incredibly low, even at the highest rates that are recommended, um, beside the other counties. So the word is Hillsborough County is still an incredibly low-cost, uh, option to do. And, uh, you know, I just don't, I don't see, I, I just don't wanna have anybody having any other impression. The only thing I've heard about is a, a stormwater or, or water and sewer assessment, I guess, which would fall under, um, a millaged type of thing. And I think that, uh, there's a lot of people that are very concerned that we do something that we haven't done with the impacts continuing. Part of those, I believe, are climate change impacts, but part of them are, as our, our system deteriorates, as it gets older, we, um, I think people very much, um, I've heard loud and clear, I think many others have that. Um, we should be doing something about those.
Okay. We're gonna move now to Mr. Fessler to review the county fees. Ms. Fessler? Let me, let me say this.
Oh.
Let me say, say this before you start, Ms. Fessler. The motion that Commissioner White made, uh, I think was to bring back a, a plan for, for, could you repeat that motion again?
I can, I can, um, I, I will repeat exactly what I read from notes that I had taken down. But, but the spirit of the motion was to have a forty-five-million-dollar bond issue in the budget, no matter what, because we can do that within the current budget parameters. But as part of the budget process, to bring various recommendations to the board on how we might get that increase to a seventy-five-million-dollar bond issue for ELAP.
If I can just clarify, give you some additional information. We could actually do the forty-five-million-dollar this fiscal year as we're doing the refunding bond issue.
Okay.
Once again, without, um, increasing the millage at all, and then provide you with additional options for some new money opportunities as we go through the budget process while you hear the whole big picture of all the needs.
What was it? I was gonna say, since this is just a workshop, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that. If you can work it into the current budget, that's even better.
What, 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 what would be some of the examples of, uh, some of the other spending areas that you've just mentioned? What would be some of the examples?
Well, for the forty-five million dollars, it would just be the list of, um, projects that Forest has provided to you. But as we're doing the refunding, we could have that new money component of the bond issue, so we have cost effectiveness on the bond issue. And that, once again, that doesn't require the additional millage rate, the millage increase. Um, for the future opportunities, then we'd have to have you see the whole budget picture as, as been described for, um, all the social services, parks, um, fire rescue, all those needs, affordable housing that we've discussed previously.
Speaking of fees.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, Tom Fessler, Assistant County Administrator over Financial Services. Um, I know we've, I know, uh, we have been here for a while, so my, my presentation is very short. It's, uh, four slides. Uh, we just wanted today to, um, have an opportunity to go over with you kind of an overview of the county's, uh, fee situation. And again, it's, it will take me just a very few minutes to run through this, and then I'll be available for any questions. Um, on the first slide here, what we wanted to do is just basically show you what fees that you have addressed on, in, in the recent past. You can see in the first two fees there, with the ambulance fees for fire and the fire marshal fees, that was, those were addressed back in fiscal year sixteen. So we're, we're comfortable that those are at a level, um, that, um, fits within, uh, the realm of where our peers are. Um, you can see that you also, um, in the recent past, have addressed mobility fees. Um, and as you're aware, those fees are scaling up as we go through time and are starting to generate, um, some, uh, additional revenues and are actually trending above what we had projected a few years ago. We also, um, you also just recently have, have, um, addressed, started to address the development fees. That was this year, back in May, or, or actually at the May one, May one, uh, board meeting. Um, stormwater fees, we have been addressing those since fiscal year sixteen. We've been trending those up. Um, you actually, um, had a, um, a recent action to come back and, uh, to take a look at, um, some additional actions related to stormwater fees in fiscal year nineteen. And then, um, also, you recently had a solid waste workshop where you addressed solid waste fees. Uh, and also, we've recently addressed, uh, EPC fees and library fees. Additionally, within the past four months, you also have addressed, uh, pet resources. That's not on this slide, but pet resources licensing fees. Couple of areas that you will be discussing shortly, upcoming. We have a workshop related to water wastewater on June twenty. And then also, we wanted to come back and we, um, there has been a study that's been done on fire rescue impact fees. Um, and there is a, um, workshop scheduled on July twenty-eighth to address those. Some areas where we, we might have some recommendations on some things you might wanna consider in the future would be planning commission fees, parks and rec fees, conservation. Some additional tweaks maybe in pet resources. I did have a conversation with Scott Trebatowski before the meeting, and feels like we're pretty close there, but maybe some tweaks. Um, and then with the medical examiner's office, uh, those don't, uh, we don't generate a lot of fees there, but there are some that, um, have been stagnant for a while that we feel, um, might need to be looked at again. Um, and then the last slide I had was, just wanted to give you a sense of, um, what the fees are on a county-wide basis. And maybe also give you a sense of, based on that, some scale as to, uh, the fees that you have addressed in the recent past and what, um, opportunities you might have, um, currently to address some additional, um, fee areas. So if we start kind of up on the left-hand quadrant, I'll go, uh, clockwise. If I start up in the area with the, you see courts fees there, about ten million dollars. Those are typically per Florida statute, so we don't have a lot of control over those. There are some controls in some areas, but generally, we work with the courts when there's, um, any, um, idea that, where we might wanna address some of those fees, we generally have to work with the courts. But a lot of those are, are per Florida statutes. Again, stormwater assessments, you've, uh, recently decided that you were going to address those. That's another twenty-three million dollars. Uh, then we get to the impact fee area. And you are gonna be taking a look at and working with other jurisdictions related to the school impact fees coming up. That's a thirty-three-million-dollar piece of the, uh, impact fees there, which are the impact fees. The total budget, um, for fiscal year nineteen is about fifty-four million dollars. Again, in that slice also, you'll be taking a look at the, uh, fire impact fees. You can see right, right now, we're generating under, probably a little bit under three-hundred thousand a year. Uh, we realize that those have been something that needs to be addressed going forward so we can continue to fund our fire stations. Uh, just to give an idea, a new fire station costs roughly four million dollars to construct. Uh, we've got fees, certain fees that are levied and are collected by the sheriff's office, so we don't really have a lot of control over those. Um, development fees, again, I just pointed out that, that you've recently started to address development fees and then fire rescue fees in the recent past. So what you really get down to is, out of about a hundred and fifty million dollars in fees that we have in the budget for fiscal year nineteen, the areas where we probably have a, a little bit of the opportunity would be in those final three slices there, um, which total about fifteen million dollars. And even within those areas, um, you know, there probably are not too many fees in those areas that, where you haven't taken a look at them. But some of the areas you might wanna consider might be in the parks and recreation area, as far as like, uh, league fees, parks impact fees. Uh, we have some ideas as it relates to, uh, camping rentals and some other, uh, classes that we might be providing or activities. Um, there are some areas we might wanna address some of those. It wouldn't be significant additional revenues, but probably just an opportunity to take a look at maybe what the market value is there, and an opportunity to cover some additional costs in the parks area. Um, and with that, I'm available for any questions.
Okay, look, it's getting late, folks, and, uh, if you're gonna, just keep our comments short. It's going on four o'clock. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. Um, I just think it would be really good, um, apropos what we heard before and the articles that have been in the paper that are, are talking about taxes, but really confusing, um, are, are extraordinarily low impact fees over and over again versus our ad valorem for us to, um, distinguish when we make these lists between what has ad valorem impacts in any way as opposed to what is, um, an, an impact fee. Uh, the impact fees will not affect the taxes that anyone is paying to the county. So I think it's really important, um, for purposes of press, the public, everyone else to distinguish, um, these two fees when we go through them. I'd just like to say that I think it's really important for clarification that, you know, they understand, um, that, uh, and I can't even tell you right offhand. I can tell you some of these are the impact fees, but I think it's really important for people to understand that.
Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thanks, Tom. Can you go back to that pie chart? These are, these are fees by agency, right?
These are fees that are within the county budget. I'd stress, stretch that definition a little bit to include some things, as you can see, like stormwater assessments and.
Right.
But generally, the, the, the areas where basically we're, we're charging a, a dollar amount for a given service or that's provided by the county.
So, so in terms of, of, of fees that are still, um, available to be collected or on the table, so to speak, I look at agencies like the sheriff's office, courts, even EPC. And I wonder if there are any punitive fees that are at our disposal that we're not currently collecting, like on speeding tickets, that sort of thing.
Sure, there might be some opportunities in, in, in some of those areas. We'd have to go back and, and kind of evaluate that. Um, again, within statute, um, and so, like the courts areas, it's by statute, and it does provide some flexibility. A lot of times, it is in. A lot of times, it is in, in conjunction with working with the courts on those, but there, there could be some opportunities there.
Is it possible to bring a report to the board that would list available punitive fees that are available to the board?
Sure, sure. We can come back with something.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Oben, you recognize.
Thank you for your report, and, and this is, it's really fascinating, where, you know, where our monies come from and where we use them, but I, you know, there's, there's certain populations within our communities that cannot actually withstand a fee increase in order to benefit from our investments, such as in parks and rec. And obviously, sunshine line is, is very important to help those that can't get around on their own. So I, there are going to be certain areas that I'm going to hold sacred, and other areas I find less sacred. But to your point about, about fees, you know, I, you know, if I had my choice on certain, certain crimes, what I would charge would be a whole lot more than what ends up being charged, so, you know, but I do, I do think it's important for us to really kind of weigh what the social impact is of certain fee decisions, and really, who carries the burden. As we've said, you know, while our fees are comparatively low when it comes to the development of our area, and there is the conversation that increasing those would then result in higher home prices, it, given our ability to waive some of those fees for affordable housing, it may be that we actually create a fee structure that incents what we need most. And what we need most in this community is transportation as well as affordable housing, and to support our social services so that people feel economically empowered to be able to be successful. So I, I'm going to look at this from that perspective and hope that we can have those conversations and really understanding what the costs are to provide those services and what, what, when we increase those fees, how we go about actually encouraging good behavior and the kinds of things that we really need in this county. So thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Fessler?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Merrill?
Just to take a minute to give you a sense of where we are in time and how much time we have to wrap things up here. So this is where we are today, the May sixteenth, operating fees in ELAP. We just completed that workshop. The next workshops will not occur until June and July, but those, so the water wastewater is an enterprise fund, the money can only stay there, so it doesn't really affect the general fund. Fire impact fees, again, specified use. And then the budget reconciliation is when the, the budget does have to be wrapped up so that you can set the trim, which is required by the state, and that sets the millage, and you can't increase it, you can decrease it from that point in time. So that's a, that's a pretty important milestone. We do have public hearings scheduled on July eighteenth, September in September, but just to give you kind of a sense of where we are, the recommended budget delivery will be July seventeenth at your board meeting. So where we are in the process is that at the end of May, in a couple of weeks, we will need to essentially stop making changes to the budget so that Tom and his folks can begin balancing it and producing the materials that then end up being delivered to you and to residents. So, so there's some time between now and then for additional conversations, either in this venue or individually, but just encouraging you to, to get your, your items in in the next couple of weeks so that we can incorporate them in the recommended budget. And then, so I just wanted to give you a sense of where we are in time with that.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else? Saying nothing else was your end.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fessler.